President.
Ms. Pat.
President.
Mr. Whalen. Ms. Wyman.
Here.
Mayor Sagerth White.
Here. We have a quorum. First item on our agenda this evening is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Second.
Motion second, any additions or corrections? Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll go to petitions and communications. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak for a period of no more than five minutes, if you'll bring your card up from the back and bring it to myself, the clerk will get a chance to do so, but not before we get a presentation from Emery Oni about the Convention and Visitors Bureau, he's got a couple of guides to pass out and a little presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Basically what we're here for is list two, pass out our new business move and how I would press, you'll see a new and approved from last year. Even the paper is a better quality. We got an additional grant from the state under their Tourism Marketing Partnership Grant, which helped pay for 50% of the cost of this publication. And I just wanted to bring that to you so you could kind of see some of the material that we're producing. The other thing that we passed out was the Group Tour Meeting Planner Guide, and if you'll notice, it is also, our Meeting Planner Guide on the back and the Group Tour Guide on one side, and Meeting Planner Guide on the other. That was to meet the requirements of a grant, it was produced with international grant from the state, and matter of fact, it was 100% grant money that produced that guide. So we were able to combine the two, and when you're short budget, you're able to, you just have to look for creative ways to expand your budget. So we were able to do that through the international grant because of the group tour that we promote in Canada. We have a strong Canadian market because we're only about 10 to 12 hours away, so we're able to do that and work in conjunction with the state. But, so I'm not here asking for anything, just here kind of thanking you for your support, we appreciate it, and if you've got questions or comments about the guide, or anything that we can change next year around, let us know, we'd be happy to do so, we love to get input. So thanks a lot for having me.
Hey, any questions for Emily? All right, thanks, we appreciate the update.
All right, thanks.
Any other petitions and communications? Council members? No other petitions and communications, we'll go right to the reports of standing committees. We have the report from the Committee of the Whole. Chair.
One A. Resolution number 2004, there's 02, 002R. Resolution of support for application for Illinois Department of Resources funds for the City of Urbana, Stone Creek Boulevard, back path. Go move.
Second.
You have a motion of second, is there any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Hayes?
One B. Ordinance number 2004, there's 02, there's 014. An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of Urbana Home Consortium, Community Housing Development Organization, the Urban League of Champaign County Development Corporation, lease purchase program for fiscal year 2003 to 2004, so move.
Second.
You have a motion of second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please call the-
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Motion carries with five ayes. Mr.-
Those are all items from the Committee of the Whole, the next committee meeting will be the 23rd of this month, 7:30.
Hey, thank you. Next, we'll move on to reports of special committees, special committee reports this evening. Seeing none, now we'll go to reports of officers. Ms. Tyler is going to take a little presentation on the Champaign County Greenways and Trails Plan, this is being gathered by the Champaign County RPC staff.
Thank you, and there is a draft that's been the plan, it's a lengthy document, I've made some complete copies, but I've copied the essential portions for you this evening, attached to Michaela Bell's memorandum. And what we've excerpted here is a list of prioritized projects, that shows the future trail system for Urbana, Champaign, and Savoy, also shows existing trails, and it prioritizes these greenways and trails into three categories of low, medium, and high. It's an effort that's taken at least a few years to put together with the Regional Planning Commission and a variety of participating agencies, Forest Preserve Districts, Park Districts, University of Illinois, Mohammed Rantoul, Champaign, Savoy, and Urbana, among others. The projects that were identified were ranked by this committee, and I'm really happy to note, by the Park District in Urbana and City of Urbana projects ranked very favorably. So I think that this is a plan that positions us well for implementation of a great network of trails and greenways. There was extensive public participation in developing the plan, there were two citizen surveys that was sent out to 3,000 residents, and other follow-up with a very long task force, so we wanted to make sure that the city council got a copy of this map as it exists in draft form, and a copy of the complete plan if you need it, going to the Regional Planning Commission for its approval on the 20th, and then we'll be coming back to the communities in its final form for endorsement. So we'll bring it to the planning commission for their review and comment, and then finally to city council probably in about four to six. Any questions?
Questions about this plan?
So, tonight you're just going over it, what's, what sort of process or involvement besides giving comments does council have, are we putting it into this, or is this just the RPC is going to be the one in charge?
The plan preparation's already been funded by the city as part of our dues to RPC, it will be coming back in its final endorsement by the participating agencies. The further funding would be on an annual basis as we go through our CIP process, and there's a whole section in the plan on funding via state, federal, and other resources to get these projects funded, so I think it's a fate that this would be an annual update of a greenways plan, but then would be implemented through our CIP and other means. Thank you.
Any other question, Mr. Hayes?
Yeah, these priorities, high, medium, and low, what do they indicate?
They're relative timeframes, I think, let's see.
Somewhere 0 to 5, 6 to 10?
Yeah, it's, short is five years with, and mid would be 10 years, and the long term is 20 years, so the goal would be to have all of these facilities constructed in 20 years, it's an ambitious goal.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Chenoweth?
So, Dr. Tyler, when you say that it will be coming back to council for an endorsement, does that mean we basically have like a yes/no vote, or at that point can we make amendments? What would be the process by which council members would make recommendations, or is that period finished, or is it before RPC votes on, or what is the process here?
There's not a lot of time because it's in the draft, but there is a way to make amendments, so I think this would be a good time to take a look at the plan, if you see something missing, or something that's included that's troublesome, we'll address that before it becomes finalized, and that way the endorsement can occur smoothly at that point.
So you would recommend that council send our concerns by what date, and just to understand the process?
I would say just as soon as possible, and we'll put that into the comments that have been received. This has been out for public review for several weeks, and now they're in the process of trying to create a final, so time is of the essence for the planners at RPC, which isn't to say that it can't be amended, and it won't stop a year, so there'll be future opportunities as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
It looks like a lot of these paths will at some point, sometime in the future, there are some that it appears there is, there is no plan for final connection, and I'm wondering, is that just where they're not connecting in any time in the future because it's a street that's not very well traveled, and so they're not expecting, they're expecting that cyclists or people using the path would just go on the street or use the sidewalk?
Could be a variety of constraints, I know there was very competitive process to get these shown. Doug Miller from Public Works and Michaela Bell, Community Development, worked with the other agencies and Regional Planning Commission on which paths got to be located, and I think, well Doug's here tonight, if he had any particular questions about a link, he may recall why it's on, or why it doesn't connect.
Thanks.
Oh, do you have any comments?
I just think that as we develop our system, that there'll be other links that we add to it every year, a logical link that isn't, that comes up in the future because of the development, or whatever other factors identified. I think that the main important thing is to keep it as a dynamic, and keep updating it, and have a goal of a bike path system in the community that's interconnected, that's the same thing, that's a priority for the funding agents, both the DNR and the federal government. I think as there are other links that will probably be added in the future.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Is this the first plan of its type?
There was a map issued prior to this, is that five, six years ago? Oh, okay, in the document with that. Do you want to provide some background?
Just interested in the history and whether or not, you know, what happened to the last plan, and etc.
Yeah, the, I've got a copy of the original plan, this is, was put together in 1999 by RPC, they currently had a grant to update the plan, and it's been expanded from, from more of an urban community to a countywide plan, and if anyone wants to borrow this, you're more than welcome to, if you want to look at it.
I believe I have that, that map, that's the original map's process.
Could be that many of the bypass, proposed bypass that were in the current, in the current draft were in this plan, disturbing.
I think the last plan implementation and prioritization is to the same extent, so this is really an improvement, this effort?
Oh, at some point, you know, some of these go into residential areas, and we don't really designate residential streets as, oh, a long time ago we used to do that, but I think there've been some problems with state legislation and liability in designating a residential street as a bike path, but that doesn't mean they're bad to bike on, or very nice to bike on, and better choices than some of the busier roads, but they just can't be officially designated as bike paths and are thus not shown on the map.
Any other comments about this? So, Ms. Tom, we'll probably see this in another few weeks, but if you do have any comments, as she said, get them back as soon as possible, if you expect to have them incorporated into the plan at some point.
Do have some copies if you need, want to see the whole thing.
Yeah, what you were given is just main lists and map that show the plan, but there is a thick booklet, probably twice as thick as the original one that Doug just showed you, so happy for that as well. Any other reports of officers? Okay, we'll go on, we've got a couple items of new business. Item one is an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, North Cunningham Entryway Befication Grant, this is the agreement that we got to accept the state grant a couple of weeks ago, we just didn't have the budget amendment, found in time to go with that. Any questions about this?
Move approval?
Second.
You have a motion of second, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Opposed, that motion carries.
It's a roll call.
Oh, yes, we need a roll call, Ms. Clark, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Mayor Sagerth White?
Yes. That motion carries with six ayes. And finally, an update on the utilities, this is an update on the Illinois American Water Company negotiations, Mr. Holtz?
Thank you, Mayor. I sent to each of the council members a copy of a list of highlights of the proposed water agreement. To give a little bit of context, again, the current water franchise is due to expire in a couple of months, and I and Fred Stavens, Champaign City Attorney, have been meeting on a pretty regular basis over the course of some months with representatives of Illinois American Water Company to discuss a renewal, a renegotiation of a franchise agreement to govern the future period of time after April. We've used a couple of, I think, a couple of overriding concerns to guide us in our conversations about those franchise agreements. One of them is the current environment of transfer of utility control. We know that the utilities in the area have been transferred a number of times in the last few years, and fortunately the company hasn't at this point led to any serious negative trends in the service and things like that, but we're wary, so we're looking to get more control in the agreement than what we used to have. I think the mayor set it pretty well the other day when we were speaking, pointed out that, you know, in this era of deregulation and constant transfers of controls, you never know who you're going to get, and we have learned that we need to take a much more active role in policing our utilities and working together with our utilities to make sure that what they're providing to our, they're doing with what essentially is a monopoly service remains at very high levels. So with those overriding principles in mind, we have made a variety of suggested changes, pardon, made a variety of suggestions about changes to the franchise agreement. This is, at this, at this point is just a proposal, it is certainly not anything that's been agreed to by the parties at the table, and obviously it's not anything that's been agreed to by the city council and mayor, or by the, by whatever board of directors of the company required to authorize this, but these are some negotiating points, and here's the kinds of things that we're looking at. The summary, I'll just kind of walk through this a little bit and add some points to what I did in writing, as well as answer questions as we go along. At section 2.2 of the current franchise agreement, there's some language about relocation of the water facilities. Under the current command, the language for relocation has a few exceptions, and one of them seems to relate to if the relocation is for the benefit of a private developer. Well, as you know, you know, so much of the work that's done in the city, and so much is done these days, when you're redoing intersections and curb areas and relaying roads and things like that, there is always benefit somewhere to a private developer, or very often a benefit to a private developer, and we don't like to have that as a, as a backdoor way for the utility company to get out of an obligation to relocate the facilities that has in the city's own right of way. So we're looking to tighten that up and to take away that as an exception. We are looking as well to put in some more enforceable criteria for the timeframes in which these kinds of repairs are done. In some ways, the water company is really in an unlucky spot right now, because they come with their franchise renewal at a time when we've just experienced a whole rash of problems with utility. The water company hasn't been so bad, but for us, it's been really good, because we've, with our experience with Illinois Power, we've learned that there's all kinds of things that we need to really tighten down on with this new kinds of franchise agreement, and one of the problem areas that's a serious potential problem with the water franchise is that this agreement that we currently have in place has no criteria and no specific timeframes or requirements about how fast work needs to get done by the utility, and so we want to make sure that we don't have the same kinds of problems as we've had in the past years with Illinois Power, where projects get held up and delayed for months because of the utilities in transit getting its own work done. At section 2.3, this, in the overall scheme of things, is not a huge issue in terms of dollars, but it's a constant annoyance, it's a constant, when the water company comes in to do work in, say, the grassy area between a sidewalk and a street, and they dig something up, and they do a little bit of work in there, and they fill the hole back in, and they have not been particularly good about returning the property to its original condition. Very often there's mounds of dirt and gravel and rocks laying there for months on end, and things don't really get tidied up the way they should, so we're proposing language to fix that up, and even though it's not a huge thing on the grand scheme of things, it's the kind of thing that really gets under the skin of the particular property owners involved. Section 2.7, we're looking to make sure that we get the information about the utility, water company's facilities and structures in a really good, that would be compatible with the GIS system that we had demonstration about just a few weeks ago here, compatible with that and workable as an overlay on that. There is some concern, I suppose correctly so, about availability of this information in such a comprehensive format, likely available, that raises some security concerns, and I think that that can largely be addressed by recognizing that there's new legislation at the state level that specifically exempts that kind of information from public disclosure. How that would work system is something that I haven't yet explored, but it's something that we need to look at when we do that. Section 4.1 relates to customer service standards, and done here is to propose customer service standards that are, that are in place right now for, for a far more critical utility in the city, and that's cable TV. We have all these wonderful customer service standards for cable TV, and nothing, practically nothing for power, and so we decided if we can have these kinds of standards for cable TV, cable company to come out and do service within a certain amount of time, and that require them to keep a certain kind of staffing level, and answer the phone within a certain number of seconds, and do that 90% of the time at least, surely we can do it for life critical sorts of things, such as water, and down the road, I hope, electric. So basically what we did was we borrowed wholesale and, and freely from the cable language to corporate standards, and I think that pretty likely we'll have some pretty good agreement with the water company about those kinds of things. There's some new language at 4.2 about water quality, questionable whether that would rip effect, because really the EPA monitors a lot on that, but it maybe would give us a little bit of leverage. Section 4-
So it was very difficult, as a commission for us to remedy those, we could put pressure on, we could raise public awareness about, but there really wasn't a default piece, so that was, it's good to see that. Just, section 4.2, water quality, does this provision, and I was not able to read the details, so maybe if I actually read that section, I would understand, but does this mean that every time the water tests badly, that we get a report on it? Is that what that provision means?
Yeah, as you, if you look at it, it's on page 23 of the draft that you have in front of you.
Okay.
It's basically a one-sentence requirement.
Where's this?
Requires them to report to us, and as part of that reporting requirement, it requires to report to us any citations or violation notices that it has from any company, that it has from any oversight authority, and I think particularly here, we're talking about the Environmental Protection Agency of the State of Illinois. So basically, it's designed to keep us in the loop, more than anything else. So often we find that, as we dig deeper into this kind of thing, we learn that the utility has all kinds of information that seems to us, as, as people who are responsible for the citizens of the community and their access to these services, seems to us that we ought to at least be aware of it, and be able to track it. And that's, I don't think that, that we argument that we would have any kind of control over the one, I don't think we'd really want to get into that business beyond what the EPA, I would think that that would be something that included from our jurisdiction.
Okay, and then, section 4.3, water supply, restricting the sales of, from within Champaign County to customers outside, is it?
Yes.
Do you know if it's currently the case that, say, aquifer or from our water source is sold to the state or outside of the general?
It's a, it's an interesting situation, and I, and it really has probably with respect to the water company, and the other is with respect to anybody, be the water company to tap into the aquifer. Therein lies the real problem with those kinds, we hear people saying, you know, geez, we ought to be able, company from bottling all its water and shipping it out of the state, well, you never know what's going to step present, it appears that our water company isn't interested in doing out their line of business, they're interested in pumping water to their captive customers right here in town, they're perfectly happy to come in and, where there's, where there's good access to the aquifer and run to the ground and pump water out and out elsewhere as, as, you know, a spotty place. We all know it tastes pretty good, but hey, the real problem there, you're not a western state, you come to these states where there's all kinds of interesting, and riparian rights and, and act sources, because they're essentially arid places, of laws governing all that kind of thing. Here, up until now, has often been thought to be in JAB, we'll see when we get the aquifer study back, but totally aren't any laws in Illinois, no.
Okay, and then just a final question to understand what the water company controls. I have a picture in my mind, I'm not sure it's accurate, is it the case that the water company buys what, taps into the aquifer districts, they use it, when it's used, it goes to our sanitary district, and then does the water, water from our sanitary district, or is it recycled back into the community? Water from the aquifer, and what happens, the water goes through the, through the treatment plant?
Outlet into the saline.
We don't drink it.
Okay, we don't drink any renewed water?
Outlet from the sanitary, from the plant, it's right by the saline, there's an outlet there, the EPA standards before it's-
All right, that's-
Yes.
Trivial question anyway. Section 5.1, amount of, and the rates will be based on?
Okay. Twenty-six, yes.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, I think, right?
Yeah. So the drops, the-
Let me find. If you look about a paragraph, there's a sentence that says, "In no investment caused the minimum annual payment to be less than a yield amount specified in section 5.1", there's a- There's, there's nothing that would allow those kinds of fees to go down, lower.
I have questions on the, on section 4.1 on the customer service standards, relates that American Illinois Water Company is not, doesn't have the, such the reputation as Illinois Power has, but it certainly does have some problems with consumer, customer services, and you call and you leave your message on a machine, and sometimes they answer, and sometimes they respond, and sometimes, you know, they just never respond to, to letters or to phone calls or messages. And then in, there's a, a section D in, on page 21.
Page 21.
Where it talks about non-compliance, and I'm wondering with that and with the summary, do, who's the one who asserts that they're not in compliance? Because if they, if messages are, consumers leave messages on their answering machine, on their voice message machine, with- on their voice message machine with questions, concerns, complaints, they claim they've addressed all of their, their problems, um, and they'll report that, I assume, to the city that they're in full compliance. How is there any check on that?
I think that comes, uh, under Article eight, the defaults and remedies section. Let me double check that though. Article eight, uh, deals with the company defaulting or, or failing to comply with the terms of the agreement. Now, obviously, you know, there's always a question of, of, um, when something becomes a material breach of the agreement and, uh, we'll, we'll wind up getting into those battles. In order to really specifically answer your question, I'd have to go back and look at it and get back with you. But as you're looking through it, as you read this, if you have any suggestions, I'd be happy to hear them too, about what you think could be done to improve that.
Well-
But there, there is no board, for instance, Ms. Chenoweth was talking about the, the joint cable and tell, something like that. There is, uh, no real equivalent to that commission for the water.
Do people send, uh, file complaints with the ICC as they would for power problems? If they've got complaints about the water or, I'm, I'm just wondering, would we then get copies from the ICC of, of complaints against the water company or would it just be that on their honor, there's problems we've, we've, that have been reported to us, this is how we responded, so we're in full compliance and doing a great job?
Yeah, you do, when you're dealing with problems like this, you do, uh, hope that the ICC, uh, really takes ownership of the problems and, and brings about compliance. You know, um, it, you ask yourself, well, okay, well, we're, by gum, we're going to terminate their agreement. Well, okay, the water's there, uh, the pipes are there, everything's there and people still need water, so what do you do when you terminate the agreement? Uh, where do you go forward? You say, well, we've terminated your agreement, but we're going to require you to continue providing service. Uh, well, we renegotiate the terms of this agreement. I suppose it was what it comes down to. Uh, how do you take that situation where nobody else can provide the service, where the company and its facilities are privately owned, where basically everybody's a captive customer of it and the company isn't living up to appropriate standards? And basically you have to kind of beat them up about it and hope that you get somewhere. It's not a very good answer, I know. Uh, except perhaps if you say, well, we really ought to own this utility because then we'd be beat up ourselves if the, if the service levels don't match up with what they should be.
If the city owned it, I suppose then, if the city didn't do its job in customer service or other, other, uh, areas like that, then at least the city councils, uh, the, the water company obviously can't do that and I'm not saying that we should beat anyone up. I, I just, as, as we've seen, as these are improvements, obviously, from the current agreement, I want to see if there's a way to, to continue to plug all the holes in the, the water problems, um, especially as they deal with and, and especially as customer service issues are concerned. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Pat?
Thank you. Um, one, one thing, getting back to the restriction on the sale of the water, the example you gave, Steve, was, um, that someone could just drill a hole in the ground and suck up the water and bottle it. They have to pay for the water if they did that, wouldn't they, under any circumstance? No. So I could, I could go out in my backyard and just go, hey, I mean, I have to pay the cost of drilling the well, but I could just drill my own well and not, and not pay the water company for the water?
No, the water company doesn't own the aquifer, they only own the water that they, that they pump out and process and-
So people that are in the county who still have, who have well water are not paying anyone for it?
Those are shallow wells and they're not paying anyone for them.
How about that? Hmm, okay. Um, another question I had, had to do with the language, uh, uh, no, I just lost the page, about, um, assigns and, I'm sorry, page fifty.
Page five zero?
Yes, five zero. The company will have the right at any time to assign the entire agreement to any public utility corporation organized under the laws of the State of Illinois. And then section C says that they will not sell, transfer lease or without the prior consent of, of the council. I'm just wondering if they have the right to, under this agreement, to assign it, then how, why would the council deny the consent?
Uh, if you look at the first, um, couple of words under right to assign, it says subject to this section and that brings in the rest of the cons- The, the language under paragraph B, right to assign, which is the, which is the language that kind of gives that real broad right to assign, is the current language that's right in the agreement right now. And so, and then if you look down at paragraph C and consent, that's all new language that's being proposed. The, uh, and if you look at, going back again to section B, right to assign, it says, subject to this section, maybe it needs to be clarified a little bit. I, I think you're right that it's a little confusing about exactly which section is being talked about. It means to refer to the entire section five, A, B, C, and D.
Well, I'm not a lawyer, but I, I think it maybe should be a little clearer which section it is. Um, and actually, sort of the same type of question, I may just not be understanding how far authority goes, um, that section nine point two, um, which starts on page forty-seven, it says, "The city recognizes that state law currently constipates that the company provide water service to all persons without discrimination or delay, so the company may not condition water service on annexation by the customer to the city." And then it says in subsection A, "To the extent permitted by law, the company shall not provide water service to anyone if they go in annex." Um, what are we accomplishing here? Are we accomplishing anything? Is this, in the event that state law were changed?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And again, probably, well, it's possible it could be more artfully worded, uh, it's an attempt to recognize both that this is an argument that state law probably does prohibit that right now, but that there's the possibility, I don't know how likely, but a possibility of getting that changed.
Okay, and one last question. This has to do with section, uh, nine point six, well, nine point one also, as far as the terms. It says that the term, excuse me, the term is for a period of five years unless the agreement is earlier terminated or the city acquires the facilities. So the city could determine or decide to, to facilities within the five years, it would not have to be at the end of the five years?
Uh, no, I think, and the option to purchase basically is at, is at any time, so yes, even before the five years is up.
Okay.
And that's why the term language is phrased that way.
Do you have any idea if this five years is something, um, that we could expect is going to be agreed upon?
I have no idea. I, I know that the water company would be delighted to sit down and sign a fifty-year agreement right now, but that looks very much like what we've got right now. But we're not going down that road.
And for some reason, but for some reason, if they were not agreeable to five years, if it were a longer period, there would still be the opportunity for the municipalities to purchase before those fifteen years were up?
Yes. It, if we get the option to purchase language, I mean, right now, there isn't any option to purchase language in there.
I think, yeah. It's, it's important that you understand that these are proposals that our crackerjack attorneys, Hannah, have put together based on what we, we think are our concerns. Um, to my knowledge, at this juncture, the water company has not agreed to a single one of these proposals.
That's correct.
Um, so what we are sharing with you is our position, um, whether we get any or all of these to be determined and we must be very clear about where we are with that. These are our proposals and they have not agreed to any of them yet.
None of this is based on any kind of-
Not agreed to any of their proposals.
Not agreed to theirs either.
Oh, they haven't presented a proposal?
Oh, they've made a variety of proposals and I'm sure that, uh, let's see, they gave us a date for responding to this. I'm not sure off the top of my head what that was. Actually, it's tomorrow, I think, they'll be responding to us. Um, and so we'll see what they have to say in proposing.
They'll be responding to this?
Yes.
Okay.
We felt that it's important to get, uh, to get out to you and to the public what kinds of things we're looking at here because, yeah, obviously this has tremendous importance , certainly over a number of years. And, uh, uh, we need to have some input in this and have people kind of educated about it or at least kept up to speed about it as we go along, rather than just, uh, having us sitting at a negotiating table and then all of a sudden spring this on you and say, well, here's what we want.
Yeah, and I appreciate your, uh, sending us in advance the memo that highlights the changes and then giving us the actual document here so we could find it, that this is helpful to read that. Um, and I guess, I think, well, I've probably stayed in the obvious in saying people want to, think it's important to not let go the opportunity to buy the water company, um, although there may not be any compelling reason to do that. Right now, keeping that option open would probably, would, would definitely be in the public interest and is probably of interest to a lot of people on this. So if somehow that can be successfully negotiated, that would be a good thing.
So-
I'll just, uh, I'm just wanting to vote, but for what it's worth, I think that the option to purchase is a critical component of the contract and, um, a, a lot of the other themselves, as long as we, uh, have that, uh, that stick, if you will, that if things aren't going well and, and customers are being abused and the public trust is being abused, to go ahead and, and, uh, solve the problem, uh, ourselves, I think. Uh, you know, we've had a pretty good experience with the water company and, uh, I hope it continues. I don't object to them, uh, running the utility, uh, as long as they continue to do it in a good manner, but I think the concern about who may acquire-
It's not coming out of the water company's pocket. All right, so we expect to see a, a response from the water company and, uh, we'll see if we can get something together before the franchise ends.
We'll have some fun.
I just, I just have one. Um, in the, um, draft, it, it said that the water company wouldn't be, um, shipping any water out of the county other than that which they do pursue, pursuant to any agreements that are in place January thirty-first, two thousand and four. Do you know, are there any agreements that they?
I'd have to double check on whether there's anything that goes out of the county.
Can you check them?
Sure.
There are a couple, huh? Supply, Tusco, and Arco?
Don't know off the top of my head.
I think there are some.
Can't let us know.
Hey, any thoughts on the, uh, water company? Not, we, and we'll meet again next week as, uh, the-